We will call the Village Board meeting. It's past 6 o'clock, so we'll call the Village Board meeting to order. If you'd stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, again, welcome everyone and welcome everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Carter?
Present.
Trustee Mariscal? Trustee Kazam?
Present.
Trustee Gett?
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Present.
Trustee DeVor?
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Welcome again, everyone. Item 4 is approval of the trustees' minutes for Tuesday, April 16, 2019. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion. A second?
Seconds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
Yes, there is. First, I have a resignation letter from Sarah DeVor. It reads as follows. Dear Mayor Phelan, please accept this letter of resignation for my position on the Village of Peoria Heights zoning board of appeals effective immediately. I appreciate the opportunities for growth and support during my time on this board. I look forward to continuing to work with you during my new position to the Village Board of Trustees. I also have a resignation notice. It reads as follows. This is to notify you of my resignation from the ZBA. It has been both informative and enjoyable to serve on the Village zoning board, and I look forward to my term as trustee. Thank you sincerely, Elizabeth Kazam. Finally, I have an email that was sent to Administrative Secretary Sarah Whitbrock. It reads as follows. Sarah, you, the mayor, and Sergeant Kreider have been so helpful. Could you please pass on the following. Dear Mayor Phelan, as an investor and soon-to-be resident of Peoria Heights, I want to thank you for your strong support of development that benefits the village. Your efforts to ensure that only the best and most ethical companies are working in the construction of the new buildings and homes certainly will contribute to the success of every project. Along those lines, I want to personally thank you for going to bat to me in the matter of a wrongfully withheld deposit, and especially commend Sergeant Kevin Kreider, who is so very helpful in giving the deposit returned. This kind of support makes working in Peoria Heights a pleasure. Most sincerely, Susan Morobi.
Let me just personally thank Chief Sutton and Sergeant Kreider. We had a resident who was taken advantage of at the tune of $2,000, and thanks to the work of the Peoria Heights Police Department, that contractor was tracked down. The money was returned to that lady, so thank you, Kevin. Counsel, should we take action on the two resignation letters?
I think it's appropriate to approve them.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to accept with regret the two letters of resignation.
I'm moved to accept with regret the resignation letters.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Of course, we missed them on the ZBA, but we're very happy to have both of them here on the Village Board, so thank you both for your service on the zoning board of appeals. Next, we'd be at announcements. Just one announcement with all the rain we're having. There are some problem properties where there is some high grass. Village Public Works and the police department are on those, but if you are aware of a property, please call us at Village Hall. But they're in the rotation, right, guys? We're going to be mowing a lot of yards this week where the grass is high. The committee assignments, I have rotated all the committees, so the new committee assignments will be Economic Community Development, Trustee Kazam; Police, Trustee DeVor; Building and Property Maintenance, Trustee Mariscal; Fire, Trustee Weisenberg; Public Works, Trustee Carter; and Administration and Personnel, Trustee Gett. Next, I would like to appoint my longtime friend, Trustee Gett, as Mayor Pro Tem, so I would ask for a motion to approve Trustee Gett as Mayor Pro Tem.
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Counsel, if you could just take a minute to explain to everyone the duties of Mayor Pro Tem.
Absolutely. Mayor Pro Tem is the position that handles chair of meetings when the mayor is absent for any reason, and so we do that at the outset, approve someone, and then in the event that the mayor is on vacation or is otherwise unable to attend a meeting, we have a meeting chair already designated.
I'll have to get my permission to go anywhere.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving Trustee Gett as Mayor Pro Tem signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Jeff, for accepting that.
Well, you're welcome. Like I said, we're going to have to fill out forms and triplicate to get permission to leave, go on vacation. Give you the heads up on there, so, but thanks. I appreciate your trust in...
Thank you. Okay, we've got trustee reports. The first is Economic and Community Development, Trustee Kazam.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve. I think that's how, this is my first meeting, so we start with number one ordinance.
Those are just a few. Have any updates right now? Anything you'd like to report to the board?
Not yet. I think we're going to hear from a lot of different people this evening.
Okay. Trustee DeVor, anything under police you'd like to report?
Yes, I just wanted to remind all the residents that we do have requirements for solicitors. There's been a lot of calls and a lot of activity about solicitors coming to the residents' houses, so if you have someone soliciting, you can always call the police non-emergency number to make sure that they have acquired a permit. And then next week, we will have an update on the zoning and the landlord registration program.
Thank you. Trustee Mariscal is absent. Is there anything you'd like to report, Dustin, on building and property maintenance?
Nothing at this... Well, I'll bring one thing up that the board will have to revisit next week regarding the cameras in Tower Park. A lot of them are analog, need to be updated, so coming forward in the next couple of weeks, we're getting a quote on that to upgrade all the cameras, so that's all under building maintenance.
All right, thank you. Trustee Weisenberg, Fire?
I have nothing to report this week. I did speak with the fire chief and asked him to provide me a monthly report, so hopefully next board meeting I'll have some stuff to report.
Thank you. Public Works, Trustee Carter?
Thank you. We have one. Dave's going to come up and explain. It's on the Clearwater Celebration that we donated to, him and Emily.
Welcome, Dave.
Take it for us. Thank you. Bear with me here. Yeah, on Monday, April 29, myself and Emily, the water technician, we had the pleasure of attending the 27th Annual Clean Water Celebration, which was presented by the Sun Foundation and hosted by the Peoria Civic Center. The Sun Foundation is a not-for-profit organization that has brought environmental education to over 60,000 students in the past 26 years, and is the largest event of its type in the world. For most of those 26 years, the Peoria Heights Water Works has been a sponsor of this event, and we look forward to many more years of working with the Sun Foundation to provide quality environmental education to local students. This year's celebration included over 2,000 students and 300 volunteers. Unfortunately, there were zero Peoria Heights students there, so I will be getting registration information on next year's events to our schools to ensure that some of our students are given the opportunity to attend this fabulous event.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Trustee Carter, anything else?
I think that's all we have for...
I do have, I have one more thing. We have hired a Tower Park groundskeeper. I believe she's going to start sometime early next week after the holiday, so hopefully we'll start seeing some flowers put in the park here soon.
Would you just explain that position real quickly for the public, so everyone here tonight?
Yeah, the Tower Park's groundskeeper, it's going to be a position that she will be basically maintaining Tower Park, maintaining the flowers in Tower Park, mowing grass, weed eating. She'll also be responsible for the flowers in the pots along the businesses, along Prospect. It's a part-time position. It'll be basically a flexible schedule based on weather.
And seasonal.
Yeah, and seasonal, yes. Part-time seasonal, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Trustee Gett, anything under administration?
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. No, I don't have anything unless Chief Sutton...
The only thing I have is I would like to thank everyone who came out and attended and took part in the Strong Towns event, and also the groundbreaking. It was a great event, not only for Peoria Heights residents, but for people in the tri-county area. I'm continuing to hear a lot of positive feedback from it, so I know a lot of people put in a lot of hard work to make that happen, but it was really a great event for the community, so I would just like to thank everyone who came and took part in it, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, if I may take this time to thank all the Village employees and administration who did all the planning, and Public Works, and police who coordinated not only the groundbreaking, but also the art walk, which was very well-attended in spite of the rainy weather, but thanks to everyone who made those go off perfectly. Okay, we'll be at comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience? Comments going once, going twice. Comments from the audience are closed. Any old business to come before the board? If not, we'll go right into new business. The first is ordinance 2019-1587, and ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for the first agreement to the Peoria Heights TIF increment financing district number two. Trustee Kazam, it asks for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1587.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there, is Steve Klein here this evening? So I would like to invite Mr. Klein up to explain this.
Steve Klein, to the microphone, please.
My insurance policy, but I don't think it'll work. You didn't have it, did you? No, it's true. Good evening. Thank you. I'm, in the interest of a busy, very busy agenda it appears that you have tonight, I'm available to answer questions. I don't have a lot of prepared remarks, other than this is the same thing I think we talked about a couple of meetings ago with regard to amending tax increment financing district number two, which is currently down on War Memorial Drive, and making that TIF district accessible to help facilitate the relocation of a couple of businesses from TIF District One right now as a result of the KDR-proposed projects there in front of Treskers. And the village has asked us to configure a study area that would provide for TIF District Two to become contiguous with TIF District One. I can spend as much time as you like talking about that area. I can show you a map tonight, or I'll save that and come back when we have more information about the qualifications of the area, assuming you authorize us to proceed tonight. But just very generally, I can tell you that the area that we've been asked to look at would be essentially from Lake Street south to War Memorial Drive, west then toward Allens meets. And properties would be included on the west side of North Prospect down to War Memorial, probably over to, not any farther than Atlantic Avenue. Going south then, we get to War Memorial, and when we head west, we wouldn't be any farther north than, say, Division Street, and so you have kind of a backwards L configuration in order to connect the two areas. We do have requests, and you've already approved a couple of inducement resolutions for projects to assist a couple of projects within that L-shaped area that's not currently within either TIF area. And so that would be, that would be part of our objective here, would be to tie these together so that the two TIF districts can work more efficiently together than what they're going to be able to achieve independently. We'll configure a timeline for you that's more specific to what you end up deciding you want to do tonight, because there's some other things on the agenda too that we'll talk about here in a moment. And to the extent possible, we'll try to complete these things that you asked us to do on a concurrent timeline, so we can try to minimize the number of nights that we have to schedule meetings or public hearings and so forth, and we'll have some additional efficiencies built in for that. But I would anticipate that this procedure should, we should be able to complete this within, you know, about four months or so, four to five months at the most, so I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Klein?
So, yes, I do. I always have questions. So you said Lake, so we're wanting to tie Lake Street down to War Drive?
Want to see a map? I brought a map.
Yes, I do. Let's see a map.
I'm just trying to be conscious of your time here, so...
Okay, we need to see the map. Is that what the goal is here, is from, so now I want to do the TIF from the lake, Lake Street on Prospect? Lake and Prospect to War Drive, War Drive down to Allens. Is that what we're thinking?
Yes, you're connecting the TIF districts, correct, and that is, this is the same map...
We're wanting to extend it.
Extend it.
Expand it. Extend, expand it, yes.
I'm sorry, because there's a statutory need for extending a TIF district, which is different from what we're doing. We're not extending the life, doesn't change the schedule for the TIF district overall, we're just amending the boundary.
Right, right. So we have how many years left on that TIF? Do you know off the top of your head, Steve? Is it 20 years, or no?
It was established in 2016, and it's a 23-year TIF, and we're going to 24th year. TIF One and TIF Two were established the same year.
Right, so we have about 20 years.
Since I'm up here, I'm going to just make a pass going back in and then get the other map on something that's... Keep talking about that, I guess.
Can you show the public?
I know. Excuse me?
Can you just show us the map, too?
I can.
Please.
I don't have a... I don't have the objective... I can show it to you alone. You can take my copy.
Okay, so you said from Lake, this is actually going from Scioto? What street is that?
It would be Manita, right?
No, halfway. Well, not Manita, no. It's the red dotted line. What's the street right between Manita and Scioto?
It's Alley.
Oh.
It's between Scioto and Manita.
Alley.
That would be the boundary for TIF District One. You can have those if anyone wants. Okay, we'll see.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
We have a couple, actually.
Okay, so we did include the prompt here, or Walgreens, probably because they're too new, is that? Mr. Klein, when you are back up here, would you explain for the board what the benefit of something like this would be? The objective?
Well, again, you have, we have two inducement resolutions that you've already approved, one of which relates to Mr. Kemp's project to relocate the Subway restaurant. That property, which is at the corner of Monroe and War Memorial, is not within either TIF district, okay? In order for them to be able to make that financially feasible to add the amount of space that they're proposing to add there to accommodate that relocation and to keep that business here in Peoria Heights, we need to get that property in TIF District Two. That's what was the impetus behind the whole discussion of amending TIF District Two, which is not very far. It's literally across the street, okay? Because TIF District Two right now, you'll see, is the darker blue shaded area that's down on the left-hand corner there. It goes all the way east as far as Florrie's Music, so it's catty-cornered from the site where Mr. Kemp's building is located. Then we're also discussing with, you did a inducement resolution for Mr. Clark, who owns the McDonald's on the corner. They proceeded with their project in anticipation of some assistance through TIF, not the least of which would be for, hopefully, helping them resolve a traffic congestion problem that they have for traffic turning off of North Prospect Road, trying to get to their drive-up area there, has presented some issues and some problems, not only for their revenue, for their business that they generate, and the revenue they generate for the village, but for a public safety issue as well. Then there have been some discussions from a couple of property owners north of McDonald's along the west side of North Prospect Road, which I'm not at liberty to publicly talk about at this point, because it's not far enough along to make a public statement about it, but there have been some other inquiries for commercial development along North Prospect in that area. Next, then, the second thing that I mentioned earlier would be that by making TIF District One contiguous with TIF District Two, the state law provides that the village has the authority, because those two boundaries would then be contiguous with one another, that you could, when necessary, you could transfer funds from one TIF district to the other and back and forth as projects are needed. TIF District Two is small, it hasn't had the opportunity to realize the kind of growth that you've had in TIF District One so far, so it's possible that you may at some point want to insert some seed money in TIF District Two to get some things started, or loan it to TIF District Two, and then you could pay it back to TIF District One, provided that the boundaries are meeting, that they're contiguous with one another. If they're not contiguous, you can't do that. A third reason why we're, you're potentially undertaking this amendment is because in our discussions with the Peoria Heights School District, we've had a very positive, very collaborative, cooperative relationship with the school district from the beginning when we first started talking about using TIF here in Peoria Heights. And one of the concerns and the requests that the superintendent has asked us to consider in this amended plan would be to prepare a assistance program that would provide some type of redevelopment, revitalization, repairs, if you would, if you will, for existing residential addresses within the proposed TIF Two areas amended. This is not something that you've been able to do yet in any of the other TIF districts, but in TIF District Two, because of the continuity path that we would be taking to make these two connect, these two TIF districts connect, there will be some residential addresses, certainly between Atlantic Avenue and North Prospect down to War Memorial, and then on the north side of War, between Division and War, there's a few more homes going west. And it is the intention, then, that as part of the amended plan for TIF District Two, it would include a neighborhood revitalization program where we could provide, ultimately want to try to provide some matching grants, low-interest loans, or other forms of assistance to help those property owners reinvest in their properties and improve the older homes that are in that area, and to try to help sustain that housing stock, which is important to the school district for maintaining enrollment. So those are three solid reasons that we have been looking at for why you want to consider this.
Thank you for mentioning that, Steve. We didn't move this forward without having a long talk with Dr. Heath, and I believe Dustin and myself and Steve had at least one, maybe a couple of meetings with him recently about this. And our top priority, and I hope the board embraces this, is to rebuild our neighborhoods and to revitalize our neighborhoods, and to develop a program that improves the housing stock for the current residents, but also makes us a welcoming community to get families to move back here to the village, to raise their families here, to put kids in our schools. So it's a complicated process, it's not easy, but this is a start of that, and this housing program would be a top priority, and we've asked Steve to start developing So we're still at discussion. Trustees, go ahead, Trustee Weisenberg.
When you said there was a few houses within the new TIF boundary, there are quite a few houses.
Mm-hmm.
The majority of it is residential houses. Would tiffing this increase the likelihood of a developer coming in and buying the properties and putting up businesses or parking lots? I mean, what assurances do we have that we're not going to lose more houses, residential houses, to business development if we tiff all this?
Well, there's never any assurance that you're going to control any of that growth outside of your subdivision and zoning ordinances and use permits that you provide to begin with. Secondly, the TIF District Two plan already provides, and it will continue to provide language in it, that the village will not use the findings, the qualification findings for the TIF district as a basis for any eminent domain or any taking of property. There's no plans for any projects that would displace any residents, nor require the removal of any of these homes at this point, okay? So, and that would never be, never has been, never has been the intention of this board to encourage that type of activity. So if anything, this is a, this is going to be a tool the village can use to try to preserve these homes and to encourage some new reinvestment in those areas. Think of it, too, as perhaps a pilot-type program that wants, it has shown that it works, and it does work, because we've already been administering a program like it in West Peoria for a number of years now. Then it's possible that you may at some point want to further expand it and make such a thing available to other residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, because we had this discussion with TIF before, and we had said that we are not looking to take your homes from you. We want residents to stay here, we don't want you moving. So if there were, a developer just can't come in and do eminent domain on it, it's, if the homeowner wants to sell, that's up to the homeowner. We can't stop the homeowner from selling their home. We would prefer they don't, but this way, this gives an opportunity to get these homes fixed up and...
Regarding your question, from residential to business, that would be a zoning issue that would come back to the board anyway, so...
Yeah, everything is, as far as land transactions in the TIF programs you've established so far, have all been voluntary. So no one is controlling who buys or sells the property, no one is telling anyone that they have to sell, or what they can sell their property for. That is all, that's America. I mean, that's up to them. If they want to sell, that's fine, and if not, then they don't. But we're trying to provide a mechanism here where some of the funds that may become available in the TIF fund could be earmarked and allocated for specific purposes that would help enhance those residential areas. It could be that at some point, you'll continue your work on your North Prospect corridor, give that southern part as much attention as you're giving the north part, which, if you want to think in terms of north and south, I tend to look at Lake Street as kind of the, kind of where things begin to change their objectives or their focus a bit. You have different goals north of Lake than you might have a little bit south of Lake along Prospect. So, you know, different goals, different objectives, but, you know, we can design the plan to accomplish what it is that you want to try to encourage.
Yeah, and the TIF also helps infrastructure for your new board members. It helps take care of sewers. Our sewers and everything are pretty old, and they could use the work, help with streets and curves and sidewalks. I mean, I think it's a good idea, try and prove this, maybe it'll help things get going here in the Heights some more, so...
I agree. I think it's a great, a great proposal.
Anyone else? You ready for the question?
Did we do Atlantic, just because it's a straight... Did we do Atlantic just because it's a straight through? Is that why we went back to Atlantic?
When I did the initial drive-through to try to look at the, at the area, well, let me back up. When we go up a street like North Prospect, if Peoria Heights was on both sides of the street, if you had Peoria Heights property on both sides, oftentimes on a corridor like that, what we would do is take the 60-foot street or whatever it is, and then at least one property on both sides.
Okay.
On, in this case, Peoria Heights goes to the center line of North Prospect Street along that area, and the TIF Act requires contiguity of the perimeter boundary of the TIF District itself, it has to be contiguous. That definition of contiguity is not in the TIF Act, but case law has dictated that through, actually annexation cases have set the precedent now that we're required to try to get close to about 300 feet for purposes of contiguity. So, it's unlike an enterprise zone where you have the ability to run a three-foot strip along the edge of a road to connect different areas. We cannot do that with TIF. We have to have at least 300 feet. And these, the property depth on these properties back to the alleys are not 300 feet, maybe 150 feet, my recollection, I don't have the exact numbers. But then you have an 18-foot alley, and then you need the rest, you need the next property over, plus the, if you're going to get that far, if you're on the east side of Atlantic, you just as well take the full right-of-way of Atlantic to be able to use TIF funds to improve the street. So, that's how we got over there.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for the question? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
What are we voting on? I'm sorry, I'm still on the, voting on the 1587, which is a home rule tax, to include this?
Yes.
Is that what that's for? The first bullet point here. Yes. Okay, yes. Yes.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Steve, that passes. I think you're going to stay right there, though, so... Next is ordinance 2019-1588, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for the establishment and annual administration of the Peoria Heights Business Development District Number 2. Trustee Kazam, it asks for a motion to approve this.
Yes, I ask for a motion to approve this ordinance, 2019-1588, and Mr. Klein will give us an explanation.
In a second, please.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Steve.
So, in conjunction with, I've, I've got to memorize. So, in conjunction with, thank you, though, amending TIF District Number 2, the village has also had inquiries from businesses along North Prospect from about Lake Street where Business District Number 1 ends, okay, south, and the answer has been, of course, to this point, we're sorry, you're not within the Business District area, so we can't, we can't help you. We had a discussion with the Business District Number 1 Advisory Committee on Tuesday of last week, right? And we indicated that there was a desire on the part of some of the village officials, as well as some business owners, that the village consider expanding the Business District Number 1 southward. There was some discussion about that, and the Business District 1 Advisory Committee made it very clear that their preference is that the village not expand Business District Number 1 southward, and rather, if it's going to be expanded, they would prefer it be extended north, expanded to the north, which we'll talk about next, I think. And the reason for that, my understanding, is that they perceive that Business District Number 1 area, which again is as far south as O'Reilly's and Lake Street area, and it goes up to 4,500 North Prospect and areas in between, they currently see Business District Number 1 as having a very specific mission that is specific to that part of town, and they would like to continue working on that corridor plan that you have by extending Business District 1 northward. I had originally talked with the committee about the possibility of approaching this more surgically from the east side, from the, from the, from going up Columbus and back over towards Prospect to try to pick up a couple of properties that we know right now have interest in being included in the Business District. The committee made it very clear that their preference would be for us to not do that because residential revitalization, which that path would include some homes, was not their primary interest. Their interest would be in including the commercial properties on both sides of Prospect up to Glen Avenue, and then perhaps west, over towards the library on Glen, to the extent necessary to pick up some other commercial properties that could contribute as well as benefit from the Business District. So, the second map that I passed out to you is just an illustration, it's a concept for what really kind of reflects what that committee relayed to us last week. And so, the areas in yellow, they're marked on that map, would be what, right now, we're recommending you start with as far as a study area for amending Business District Number 1. So, Business District Number 2, then, would be to the south, from Lake Street, south, and basically cover the same area that we just talked about for amending the TIF District Number 2. It's the same map, okay?
Steve, for everyone in the audience and the trustees, would you just take a moment and explain what a Business Development District is, and how fortunate we've been here to have a very successful Business Development District, and maybe explain what some of those costs can be used for, some of that revenue can be used for?
So...
Maybe some examples of how we've used it up to now?
Sure. The two biggest differences between, the biggest difference between Business Development District and a TIF District is the way they're funded. A TIF District is based on real estate tax. So, if there's an increase in the assessed valuation of a property, the extent to which that increased assessed valuation multiplied by the same tax rate that everyone in town in that area is paying, creates the new part of the real estate tax bill. That new real estate tax then is deposited, received and deposited into the TIF fund. It can be used for TIF-eligible expenses such as land acquisitions, site preparation, engineering, interest write-down, other types of professional fees and costs, then they can encourage and help make a site more competitive for economic development, okay? Business Development Districts are not based on real estate tax, they're based on municipal sales tax. Business Development District allows or gives the, the village the authority to increase the municipal sales tax within a defined boundary area, not across town, but within a defined Business District area. You can increase the municipal sales tax in quarter-percent increments, not to exceed a full 1 percent. That money, then, that is generated by the retail businesses that are generating municipal sales tax within the Business District, is collected by the Department of Revenue, and then it is, it is sent by Revenue to the village, the same way that you receive your 1 percent share of the state rate. So, they collect it, and they distribute it then back to the village, and the village deposits the Business Development District funds, the new municipal sales tax resulting from the BDD tax in a special BDD fund. And that fund would be separate from the Business District Number 1 fund. However, if the two are connected, if they're contiguous, you can do the same thing, you can move money back and forth between the two. Business Development District has essentially the same eligible expenses that you would have available to use TIF money for with one big difference. And that big difference is that with TIF dollars, you cannot use TIF funds to reimburse the vertical construction of standalone new private buildings. You can reimburse land, you can reimburse site preparation, excavation, utilities and infrastructure, but not the vertical wooden shingles going up, right? With Business Development District, you can use BDD funds to reimburse vertical construction costs of new buildings. That's a major difference between BDD and TIF with regard to eligible expenses. The combination of the two, which goes back, will circle back around to the housing program, for example, provides us with an amplified tool that we can design using both TIF and Business District funds to try to encourage reinvestment in the older housing stock within that boundary area. Again, the same boundary area is what we're talking about for the amended TIF 2 area, okay? Business District Act allows the use of Business District funds for residential areas, residential development, even though they don't generate municipal sales tax. The idea behind this is that we want to try to reinforce and continue to maintain our population base as well as our housing stock that would continue to feed shoppers who will shop at the commercial, retail businesses that are within the Business District. So, to the extent we can build healthy neighborhoods along with attracting commercial development, that would be achievable by using the Business Development District tool, and can really be done quite well with the combination of BDD and TIF.
Thank you. So, we'll take questions from the trustees.
So, the, so this one, this next one that we're doing is just for the BDD extension?
Is for creating a second, separate Business Development District that would coincide with TIF District 2 area. That's right. The next item, I believe, relates to expanding Business District 1.
Anyone else? Kevin Shields, I don't see, is Kevin here tonight?
No, he's not here tonight.
Not here, okay.
He's coming next time, I think.
Yeah, he'll be here in this...
Any further discussion?
Go ahead.
Okay.
As we were concerned that who would oppose this, right? Am I always picking that up? And now, I'm okay.
Hold on.
Well, and keep in mind, there'll be a public hearing, there will be public meetings to talk about this long before you are presented with an ordinance to actually establish it.
So, this is just to do the groundwork for it?
This is to do the study because Business Development District, the area, has to qualify. There are very similar characteristics that we have to search for. They're a little different, but you have to do a study, you have to prepare a plan, you have to show that it's feasible to do it, and that's what you're, by this agreement, you would be asking us to do.
Okay.
Okay, if you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. So, we would be at ordinance 2019-1589, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement for the First Amendment to the Peoria Heights Business Development District Number 1. Trustee Kazam, it asks for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance.
In a second, please.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
So, I've pretty well explained it, I think, to this point, that the Business Development District 1 Advisory Committee asked the village to consider expanding the BDD area to, the current BDD area to the north, along the North Prospect corridor up to Glen. They haven't even seen this map that I just handed out to you yet, but this is what we narratively talked about, verbally talked about at the meeting. And then, you'll see that if you go west on Glen, past the, there's some residential neighborhood, but on to the west, before you get to the trail, there's some other commercial properties that are between the library and the, let's see, you've got the flag place, you've got...
Like bronze.
Yes, right. So, there's several businesses in a row there before you get to the trail. And at the far west end of that, I included that small park that you have on the north side of Glen. I also, just as an area just to look at, would recommend that you would consider including Tower Park as well as the Pump House property in the BDD as well, so...
So, the yellow is for to add to the BDD?
That's correct. That's correct.
Underneath the TIF, what?
Well, the current Business Development District, it's outlined in orange on that map, pretty well mirrors, pretty closely mirrors, TIF District Number 1. It doesn't exactly, but it pretty closely does. So, the yellow portion that you would be adding to the Business District, most, most of that overlays TIF District Number 3 that you most recently established.
So, with this adding on to the BDD, all these businesses, have we reached out to them that we are doing this, and do they want to belong to the BDD?
You want to take that question?
Well, again, as Steve said, it's kind of premature for that, but we will reach out, there will be public meetings. I know we've talked to some of the businesses, they are, but we've not talked to all of them.
Kevin Shields has agreed to do that, who's the chair of the BDD and...
Right, and he will be here next meeting with an update from the entire committee on, you know, what they would like. But we have been meeting, as Steve said, and this is a consensus of the last group that attended that meeting, so...
Do, do all the businesses have to consent to be included in the BDD?
They don't have to join, they don't have to be included, they can opt out.
They, they do not have a unilateral choice to opt out.
They have to be in it?
If, if the village is configuring an area that it, for planning purposes, wants to create a BDD, the village has the authority to create it without anyone opting out. But, obviously, as Chief Sutton was explaining, there needs to be some discussions, there will need to be some dialogue with the property owners, the business owners, and some opportunities to explain how this can benefit them, because one of the other qualifiers for BDD is that the area that you include in a BDD, those properties need to have some reasonable expectation that they're going to benefit from it.
Correct.
Right? So, that's why, you know, we need to have those discussions. Now, they can benefit either directly, or they may benefit indirectly, because certainly using BDD funds to improve public infrastructure, whether it be a street, an alley, a sidewalk, storm drains, sanitary or water, or whatever it may be, would be of benefit to those property owners. But we hope that there will be opportunities for them to benefit directly as well.
One example that I can cite would be, you want to talk about Prospect Road?
I was just getting ready to mention that, Mayor. I know the board was presented borrowing money from the BDD, I think it was 31 percent to pay for Prospect Road, because some of Prospect is not in the BDD. By expanding that, and then the board agreed to pay that money back, which was approximately $60-some thousand, by expanding the BDD, this would eliminate that repayment because it would all be in the BDD. There's a prime example of part of it being in, but also the people outside of the BDD benefiting from brand-new road. So, there's one example that we've recently dealt with.
But if we have businesses that don't want to join or don't want to be involved in it, then do they have the option to not be in it?
We would have to, we would have to configure the boundary, the boundary to try to go around them.
Because we don't want to land in the same position that we were in with Kevin Shields, that he did not want to be in it, and we threw him in it.
Well, I will say that... Well, I will say that, just to rewind, some of the, some of the businesses that opposed the BDD last time, I know that are now on board, just in recent discussions, and that's because we have shown what we've done with those funds, we've put it back into the BDD district, they've seen that. So I think a lot of those myths have been thrown out the window that we'll never see any return on our money. So I think we've proven that, the board's proven that. So I think once we sit down, and I have not sat down with all of them yet, Trustee Carter, but I have sat down with a few, few that opposed it, and now they are on board, so I think moving forward, it's going to be an educational piece. You know, we can educate these businesses and what they're going to get from it, and I do think, I don't think it'll be an issue, but again, we're still premature in that process, so.
I just want to make sure that we don't land where we did land a few years ago and have all the complaints that we did have, because, you know, we did have them, but I don't want that again. I want to make sure that all of our Ts are crossed, our Is are dotted, and that we thought of every possible thing that we could think of, so we don't have businesses coming up here and actually screaming at you or calling us on the phone, so.
My response to that is, I wasn't sitting here at that time, but I was sitting over there, and I did, I did experience it, and I will say that we're doing things a little bit different, and our approach is different, so I don't expect that to happen again, so.
Plus, I would hope that the businesses that were against the first one, who have come on board, would help talk to the other businesses that we're talking about bringing in, and kind of smooth that way. I mean, this way, we've got people, businesses, who experienced it and they see the benefit of it, this way they can help us explain things to the new businesses coming in, and I think it's a win-win for them.
Well, and keep in, keep in mind that I think that the Advisory Committee had very astute observation in so much that with the corridor plan that you have for North Prospect right now, if you started, for example, putting up decorative streetlights at Lake Street, and then you have to stop at Kelly because the rest of it isn't in the BDD, that's not helping Restaurant Row, that's not helping the north part of your busiest commercial area. So that BDD Number 1, as I said earlier, has a, has a pretty unique, special mission that they've recognized for this area up here, and if you keep the money within Business District Number 1, as opposed to expanding it and taking it all the way down to War Memorial, their concern, and rightfully so, would be that funds that are generated up here on this end would be used somewhere else that they would never see the benefit. So by doing the second Business District on the south side, we can determine what their goals and objectives are, and they have a plan that really meets their needs, and you keep the money, for the most part, you'd be able to keep all the money that's generated in Business District 1 up here to continue feeding this area. The big advantage to Business Districts is that you can create the additional funds from the businesses that are located within the boundary, but that money stays within the boundary, and you're not imposing this tax increase community-wide. It stays within the designated area that you're trying to focus the attention on. So I thought that was really, that was a good observation on their part, and they seem to feel like the areas that we've outlined in yellow, verbally anyway, they said they thought would be very consistent with what they're already trying to do.
Okay, so the 15, where are we at, 1588 or 1589?
89.
So the 1589 is for this yellow to be added in, correct? Am I not being...
I think that's the one you're on.
Yes, yes.
I think so.
It's a study for this one.
It's a study, you're not doing it yet. There will be, it's going to take 90 days or more to put the plan together before we'll be back with an ordinance for you to consider actually creating it.
It's one of the Ts and the Is we got to take care of.
Well, it just starts the process, that's all. Just starting the process.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you said that a few businesses had, came around since the formation of the BDD. Was Mr. Shields one of them? Because he didn't, he still didn't seem too happy about it last meeting. He said it was a touchy subject, was that Mr. Shields?
Regarding...
The, the BDD?
He's the Chairman of the BDD.
Right.
Yeah, he's, he's...
He's not only the Chairman of the BDD, but prior to becoming Chairman of the BDD, Heritage Square has a redevelopment agreement that's bifurcated between TIF and BDD incentives. So he's...
I think he's a proponent.
He's a proponent.
He classified it as a touchy subject when he, when he referenced it, that was my only...
He classified it as a touchy subject because there were people that...
Yeah, he experienced, he was here and experienced some of the businesses that didn't want to be in it, that's what he was referring to, but he is definitely, I know, a proponent of it, so.
So we're all, we're all going to make decisions that sometimes people oppose, but for the record, that was before this administration, and he was drawn in and opposed being drawn in the BDD. Since then, as Dustin has explained, we have created a Business Development District Advisory Board. And when we created this, I invited every business owner to serve on that committee, and everyone who expressed an interest on serving on that committee was appointed to that committee. This, I believe, is something that's a good example for Peoria Heights, so those businesses who are collecting that tax have a voice in how that money is being spent. So they meet monthly, and they decide and recommend to the board, it is an advisory board, but I, you know, I can't imagine a situation where we would conflict drastically with what their recommendation would be. So Mr. Shields, I think this is good public policy, who was originally an opponent because of the process, is now not only an advocate for, but Chairman of the BDD, and who's also advocating for the expansion of the BDD. Of course, it's a educational process that will have to occur, this is the first step. We're relying on Kevin, and Dustin, and Steve, and others then, to invite those business owners in for a conversation about what will occur in the future, and so the who, what, and, and why. So there, there won't be anyone left out of the process, everyone will have a, have a voice and a, and a seat at the table, but again, this is just executing the study to begin the process. And, you know, oftentimes, we're not, we're not sitting up here trying to just make decisions, these are driven by people who come to us and say, "We'd like to expand the BDD," so that, that's how this has occurred, including the BDD Chair. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay. We would be at ordinance 2019-1590, an ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at 4414 and 4426 North Prospect Road to the KD Group, KDB Group LLC. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1590.
And a second, please?
Second.
Okay, counsel?
Yes. Because this looks like deja vu to trustees who were here in January when we approved the sale of the Gray Boy site. The reason this ordinance is on the agenda is to correct a mistake that was made in the legal description, the technical legal description of the property. The Gray Boy site consisted of two primary lots, one building we had already demolished, the other building was still standing until recently, when it was demolished after the sale. What I didn't realize at the time I drew up the ordinance and drew up the contract is that the old vacated alley behind the building was not actually connected to those lots. Typically, when we vacate an alley, it becomes part of the property it's adjacent to. I have no idea why it happened, but that alley was, you know, 16 feet wide and 185 feet long, I believe, did not become part of the property it was attached to, it became its own parcel. So that was revealed during the title search and when the title commitment got issued, and so we went ahead and closed, and then the title company asked us, "Go, let's go back and clarify that ordinance to correct the legal description." So it's not necessarily technically correct to call it an amended ordinance, but it is just ratifying what we did to correct that mistake in the legal description.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Ordinance 2019-1591, an ordinance of the Village of Peoria Heights, Peoria County, Illinois, amending its employee handbook for the purpose of providing reimbursement of necessary expenditures. Trustee Gatt had asked for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1591.
And a second, please?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Gatt.
Okay, this is basically, we already have the reimbursement for our employees, but this is a statute come up with the state, and we have to put this in our employee handbook. It's basically housekeeping, would you agree there, Chief? We already have it in here, but this came up through the state, and to make everything all legal and above board, we need to put this in our employee handbook.
Dustin?
Correct, and you should see the attachment you have in your packet. The key features of this, the employee must seek advanced permission before incurring expense unless truly for unforeseen emergency expense. Alcohol and entertainment are excluded from travel/meal reimbursement. Cell phone reimbursement is limited to $10 per month unless employee submits a reimbursement claim with specific information on charges incurred for the work-related use of the cell phone. This will be added to our newly adopted personnel policy, and it has already gone through legal, so.
Questions? Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
All right, that passes, thank you. Next, ordinance 2019-1592, an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 7B and Chapter 7C of the Village Code of the Village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of modifying certain requirements for residential uses. Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve this?
I ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1592.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
I am going to have to defer this to, is this the, what we were talking about in zoning?
It is.
Village Council? Okay, so this was actually proposed about two meetings ago, I believe, and tabled for this evening.
Correct.
It is a proposal to amend height requirements in specific areas within our overlay district, and if Mark wouldn't mind explaining it, and I'm going to chime in.
Absolutely.
And then we might ask Mr. Pitts also to join us.
Right. This, this came up as a result of several zoning meetings where we were addressing R3 multifamily zone properties, and the height restrictions permit great disparity in height on lots that are adjacent to each other. There's no restriction that would tie the building height on your lot to an existing development adjacent to your lot, and the zoning board felt that there should be some limitation on perhaps having a 55-foot or 54-foot building adjacent to a single-story house. So that's the effort here, is to sort of keep things, not everything the same height, but at least reduce the disparity in height from one lot to the next.
And have some continuity, and I think there are really two portions of this. One is limiting the maximum height, if I remember correctly, to 41 feet, or is it 43?
44.
44, 44 feet?
From 54 to 44.
Okay, 54 to 44. And then secondly, to only allow an additional story next to an existing building.
That's exactly right.
So for example, if you had a one-story building, you could build a two-story building next to it. If you had a two-story building, you could build a three-story building next to it. All of these things, if you wanted to do something different that was not in current code or in this code if we approved this, you could get a variance. So it's not limiting your possibility of ever doing something taller or larger, but it just wouldn't be... It just works slightly, right? Exactly.
Before we take questions, Rick, you want to chime in on this at all?
No, I, I agree with exactly what you said. It was really based on having R3 zoning right next to some R1 zoning, where you, and sometimes R3 is right next to R2 zoning, where you have a 54-foot height, so you could have a five-story building right next to a one-story house. And, so we wanted to soften that some and just make it a step down, so if you're, if you have some development closer to Prospect Road, because that's how the zoning works, right? The zoning is less towards Prospect Road, and it gets stricter as you go out, R3, R2, R1. But as you move out, we wanted that boundary to be able to say, if you have a five-story or four-story building, you can have a three-story building and then a two-story building, but you're not going to go from five to one.
Right.
So it was kind of to try to level out without, and we don't have really a residential overlay district yet. We may in the future, but right now we don't, so this was just to change R3 and R2 to make that kind of a step.
So, are we ready for questions?
Yes, go right ahead.
You know, may I have questions? So, with this, because I think I was at that meeting when this came up, your zoning meeting, I think this doesn't have anything to do with Katie Kim and her Samuel project, right? I mean, she's grandfathered in, because I don't want to sit here and...
No, she's, the, the building that we've already approved site plan for is approved, it's...
Okay, but what she wants to do down that Samuel area, you know how she wants to do the townhouses or condos?
Correct.
Whatever you want to call them today.
So this would, so if...
Does that affect her?
Sure. If she had a 44-story, I don't think she's talking about a 44-foot building, right? So, but if she had a three-story next to a two-story, that'd be great. If she has a four-story next to a one-story, then that would affect her.
So somebody that didn't want to, I'm just using this as an example, because I want to make sure, if I vote on this, I want to make sure that I know in my head what's going on here. So let's say, I'm using her as an example. You know, she's bought several homes in there, and there are several homes that have not sold to her. So if she builds next, she wants to build next to a one-story home, a two-story house, it ain't going to happen.
No, a two-story house would be fine.
It'd be a three-story, that would be...
Three-story would be what she'd need a variance for.
And the stuff that she's wanting to do there?
And if you look at some of those houses, a lot of those houses are two-story already, so then you could build a three-story.
Yeah, I think there's only one, maybe two, or a single story.
I think there's only, yeah.
Maybe three, yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure that...
One side of the street's all two-story, the other side of the street's all one-story, so it's...
A little different, yeah. Okay.
And this is, and, you know, to the point at dinner, at, when Chuck Maron was in town, he gave this example on his, on his...
Slides.
Thing, slides, too. He showed how, you know, you get the great big building in between two one-story buildings, so.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, color roll.
Trustee Carter?
I'm going to say no, I think it's telling me no.
Nay. Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gatt?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Nay.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next, we'd be at ordinance 2019-1593, amending enterprise ordinance presented by Sally Handley. And Sally, are you here? I don't see, oh, there you are, okay. So Trustee Kazam had asked for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-1593.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, welcome, Sally.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Appreciate the opportunity, I will be very brief. I'm back again. The Peoria Heights participates in what's called the Peoria Urban Enterprise Zone. This is amendment number six, essentially some of your joint units of governments, four of the seven, are wanting to amend the boundary, very similar to the discussion tonight. So we have the City of Peoria, West Peoria, Peoria County, and Bartonville have parcels to amend on the enterprise zone. So it is a amendment of the boundary, and all of the units of government need to... and all of the units of government need to pass a revised resolution to be able to adjust for that legal resolution, a legal, um, revised legal description on that. So, tonight we'll be asked to vote on that amendment to the enterprise zone ordinance and the intergovernmental agreement, which I believe the council, uh, has had a chance to take a look at.
Sally, would you explain?
I will.
What an enterprise zone is and how it functions and how it can help the, um...
Right, right. So, right, so tonight you talked about a TIF and a business district. Um, this is another incentive tool. This tool allows for different incentives. So, basically, the, the primary incentives are building material sales tax exemption as a renovation or a new construction occurs. And then it also allows for a property tax abatement on those improvements that are done. And it's over an incremental amount over a five-year period of time on the property tax abatement. No improvement only. The existing assessment is still held true. And then I will point out, if the enterprise zone and the TIF overlap, then the property tax abatement is not in play. It is trumped by the TIF and the TIF abatement is still into that position. Because there is, for geography, I won't go to the detail, but essentially it runs along the corridors of War Memorial and Prospect, but it is focused on commercial and industrial for projects. The last, um, incentive, if you will, is a building permit fee waiver that is also offered. So, those are the three. So, again, complimentary business development tool. It's offered through the State of Illinois.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Thank you, Sally.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
Thanks, I'll get a couple...
Next is approval of the site plan by GLK Land Trust. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the site plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Trustee Kazam.
This is, um, I was just referring to Stephanie on this.
Oh, this is, okay.
This would just be the vote on the hearing that we had before the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, approval of the site plan and it can be, um, either denied altogether, approved as presented, which would include the three parking spaces that were discussed, or it could be, as the ZBA recommended, approved as presented without the three parking spaces that were discussed.
And to make sure that they have to go right at the drive-thru.
Correct. That was one of the conditions, was requiring right out only from the drive-thru. In other words, you can't go left up the alley.
So, would, restate those again, would you counsel?
Sure, sure, sure. So, the options would be approve the site plan as presented with no conditions. That would include, just to be clear, the three parking spaces. That would be option A. Option B would be to not approve the site plan at all, so just deny it. Um, option C would be approve the site plan as presented with the condition that the three parking spaces on War Memorial be eliminated and the condition, the other condition recommended by the ZBA, right turn out only. And I guess, just to clarify, I guess you could impose the condition of right turn out with those parking spaces. They're, they're independent of each other. But the two issues are the three parking spaces and right turn only, so that people are not going north up that alley after exiting the drive-thru lane.
I would personally prefer, uh, C, where you right turn only and eliminating those three parking spots, in my opinion, but that's, that's the one I prefer. Anybody else?
Are you making a motion to amend that, Trustee Gett?
Sure.
Okay, would you state your amendment, please?
I move that, uh, we approve the site plan with the, uh, with the stipulations that, uh, the three parking spots are gone and it's a right turn out of the alley. No left turns up out, out of the alley.
Is there a second to the amendment?
If we second it, we, if we move forward with no discussion, or we...
You second it and you're moving forward.
Okay, I second it.
Okay, now we're discussing, the motion is amended, not the mo, but the amendment.
And, and this, this, this motion as amended is, is effectively to approve exactly what the ZBA recommended. Those conditions that you described are exactly what the ZBA recommended.
Sounds good.
So, we're open for discussion on that.
Well, I, I think that, I mean, I see a lot of, I think that the site plan is fantastic. I'm not crazy about these three parking spaces here. I think it's kind of precarious the way they have to back out into the drive aisle. Um, I also agree that we need to take a right turn only there, so I like the proposed, the proposal C.
So, the proposal C would eliminate the green space issues?
Where we eliminate the three parking spots and...
Keep the green.
It would keep, creep the green spaces.
Keep the green, but eliminate the parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's basically what I was...
And they met, they've met their parking requirement for code. They've exceeded it.
Yeah.
Right.
Anyone else? Uh, counsel, I, I think we're taking a big leap of faith here that IDOT is going to approve this right turn. What, what, where does that put us?
That's not, um, in our wheelhouse here. We are being asked to approve this site plan as presented and IDOT, in my experience, likes to have an approved site plan before they're asked to approve something in the abstract that may or may not already, you know, be approved by the village. So, I think this is really step one in a process. This does not mean that this is going to be built exactly as the site plan. If there are changes, it will have to come back, as Mr. Korf noted. So, this is really step one in a process that's going to be several steps.
So, if there's any changes, they have to go back to the zoning?
Yeah. They would need to come back for a modified site plan, correct?
Just, just going back real quickly to the egress from the alley, it would function just like McDonald's.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
It would be like Starbucks as well, right? Yeah, a similar thing. I mean, it, because that goes right onto War Memorial, onto an alley and then...
And that is what IDOT is waiting for, is this step right here. Okay. Are you ready for the question? As amended? Counsel, should we vote on the, are we okay voting on this as amended, or you prefer us to go back to the main motion after that we approve the amendment?
Um, I, it, it's fine to vote on it as amended.
Okay.
That's what's pending and, and so I, if we vote on it, that moves the original motion.
On the motion as amended. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Carter?
To get rid of the three spots, what Jeff said, I agree, yes.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, thank you all. Next is a request for approval of payment in the amount of $12,852 to Kahoy Pump Service for work completed in Phase Two of rehabilitation of Waterwell Number 11. Uh, Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the, I think it's, um, the installment of the $12,852.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave?
Okay. If you notice on the agenda, there are three items regarding Well 11. Uh, before I get into detail on what those, the repair needs to be done, I, I wanna try to explain to you what a, in case you don't know, what a well is and what its function is. At the surface, you have a, a pump and then you have a shaft that goes down about 150 feet approximately. At the bottom of that shaft, you have a, a, kind of like a cooking strainer. That, that pump pumps the, the water up to the surface and that's where we're having trouble with Well Number 11. In the packet, I, I gave you a couple papers. The, the first one, um, has just like our, our well facts. We've got five wells. They range in age from eight years old to 54 years old. We currently have, uh, out of those five, we have three that are in service and one is used only in emergency situations. Unfortunately, the one that was built in 2011 is eight years old. We can't use it, uh, only for emergencies. So, this repair to Well 11 is necessary. We use, in the summertime, we use two wells at a time. In our current state, if we have one of our current wells go down, we're gonna be in some trouble. It's broken down into four phases. The first phase was voted on by the board on February 19th. Um, that's page number two. The original cost was $19,238. Actual cost was $15,938. That payment's been made. The, um, the motion that Cheryl just made was for Phase Two. That work has already been completed under emergency conditions. That is a payment of $12,852. That needs to be, um, approved tonight. Phase Three is also on the agenda. That's the work that has been suggested to resolve the issues that were found in Phase Number Two. And that estimated cost is $45,597. And then Phase Four is the final phase and that is the, um, material cost for the equipment, reinstall the equipment. And that, um, phase is forty, estimate is $44,934. This well was rehabbed in 2015. That cost was $80,681. So, four years' life for $80,000 is not a lot. In 2015, it was suggested that this work that is being suggested now to be done, it was suggested back in 2015 due to some budget concerns. Uh, that, um, concern was, or that, that offer was denied due to budget concerns. So, here we are now, they are suggesting that this, that work takes, uh, take place now. This funding is being, uh, paid for by the infrastructure, Water Infrastructure Improvement Loan. There is a Water Infrastructure Improvement Loan, which was approved in December of 2016 for $1.5 million. On page number three, it's the breakdown of that, of that loan, what that money has gone to. Improvements completed include a water meter upgrade project, Roosevelt Road Water Main, water tower restoration, water utility vehicle. Uh, total spent as of May 2019 is $1,398,000. Total, total funds remaining are $101,000. So, Phase Two, Three, and Four, when those are all, if those are approved and paid, that's gonna pretty much deplete the remaining $100,000 of that Water Infrastructure Improvement Loan. The other thing we have is the Water Infrastructure and Maintenance Fund. And what that is, that, that was approved in August of 2014. Each metered property is charged $5 monthly fee that is added to the water bill. We get several calls a week, do we not, Stephanie? Asking what that, what that is. And those funds are used to pay for upgrades and maintenance for the Water Department and those generate approximately $160,000 a year. Out of that $160,000 a year, $120,000 of that goes to pay for the $10,000 monthly, uh, loan payment on that Water Infrastructure Improvement Loan. So, that leaves about $40,000 a year of that infrastructure and maintenance fee on the water bill to be used for other upgrades. So, what I'm looking for tonight is approvals for payment for Phase Number Two and then I'm looking for approval to, for work to be completed on Phase Number Three and Phase Number Four. Hope that made sense? If not, I'll add, answer any questions.
Very good explanation.
Do we have to vote on it separately, or do we vote on them all?
Counsel, I think, could we, could we include all this in one resolution?
I, I think we can unless somebody objects, uh...
Would the maker of the motion include that? All, all resolutions in the sec, is that okay? Who made the, who made the...
Trustee Carter, you made the, the motion.
Is it okay, Trustee Carter, if we approve all these in one?
Oh, yeah, I would, definitely.
And this, who made the second?
I have questions on this, yeah.
Uh, Trustee Gett.
Trustee Gett, that's okay with you then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
So, we're approving all as a package, so everyone knows what we're doing here?
I think Cheryl has some questions, she said. You have questions, you said?
Can I ask a question now?
Go for it.
Do it afterwards, it doesn't. I'm very curious about the, the $40,000 does not have to be, does it have to go like towards the water?
Oh, you're, you're talking about the...
Do we use it for any of the public works? Upgrade?
Uh, the INF fee was originally passed as an infrastructure maintenance fee and as we explained it to residents, it is to support water infrastructure improvements.
Just water, okay.
So, there is, to my understanding, um, not a state statute that requires us to spend it on water infrastructure, but because the board did pass that as an infrastructure improvement, but that's what those funds are for.
Okay, okay. That was just my question, so.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? I know this is old news, but just if you'd take one minute to, uh, tell the new trustees and everyone present about the recent award that our Water Department received?
Yeah, um, we received the 2019 Illinois Water System of the Year. Um, it is an award that is presented by the Illinois Rural Water Association. That association is a not-for-profit organization that is, um, a group of professionals that assist rural, um, water departments with, um, anything from leak detection, daily operations. I, I know we're not rural, because we're surrounded by Peoria, but based on our size of our system, we are considered rural in their eyes. Um, they came and did a department tour in December and interviewed me and then we went down in February and there was three finalists and we were, um, chosen as the winner. Um, got a little recognition and then we have in the Water Office, there's a, uh, an award on the cabinet that we...
And again, congratulations, we're all very proud of you and all of, everybody for the works.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Carter? Aye, we're passionate for $103,383, right? Total?
Yeah, it's for the, sorry, I didn't add it, I didn't, I didn't add it up.
All three.
Yeah.
Aye. Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Make sure you get that dollar memo in. Aye.
Trustee Gett. Trustee Weisenberg. Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Right, thank you Dave, that passes. Okay, next we would be at the appointment of the zoning board of appeals members. See Janie here, Jack, are you here?
There.
Jack, and Matt was here, but I, Matt, would you all come forward please? If you step up, I'm going to ask you one at a time if you just tell us a little bit about yourself. And if I could, Jack, if you'd go over there. We have four people interested in these three spots, and Rick Pitzel and I interviewed everyone. And Rick and I have a, I think, a great working relationship, so I want to appoint people to the ZBA that he's able to work with. And both Rick and I agreed on these three appointees. So Janie, go ahead, if you'd tell us about yourself.
Hi, everyone, I had a whole thing planned, but I'm going to keep it a little bit short for everyone's time. And I want to first just thank you so much for the appointment, and it means a lot to me, and it's something that I don't take lightly. And secondly, I want to thank everybody here for coming. It's super incredible that everyone here loves and cares about the village. I'm happy to be here and be a part of the discussion of growth. I am a yoga teacher by trade, but I'm super passionate about building and creating community and growth and sustainability for all the people, plants, and animals in the community to not only thrive, but also survive for generations to come. So I'm super excited to be a part of it and thankful to be here. And my name's Janie. Thanks, guys.
And Janie lives on Samuel, and she attended all of the public hearings and the, and the ZBA meetings on the Samuel development, and I, I thought that would make her also a good fit for the ZBA. So she really did her homework and participated in all of that, so thank you. Jack?
Hey, my name's Jack Weedeman. Born and raised in Peoria Heights, got four daughters, go to the school in the Heights. Kind of want to get involved with the ZBA, not just because of all of the business opportunities that have come about, but also to ensure that there's still residents that will support the high school and the grade school, because the enrollment, to me, is very important. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for kids to attend school in the Heights, which also helps the community grow and thrive, not just strictly based on adding new businesses, but adding residential housing and affordability. So that's kind of my motivation.
Thank you, Jack. Matt?
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I've met with a lot of you guys here prior to this meeting, so I really appreciate it. And I was told the mayor and Rick earlier, I feel pretty honored coming, being able to come onto the board at this time, due to the, a lot of the work that's already been done for the zoning board. I've, a recent convert to Peoria Heights, I've only lived here for about two years. But as, I think what we were talking about earlier in the meeting, I have a young, starting family here in the area. We, we were attracted to Peoria Heights for kind of like the community, as well as the commercial opportunities here. And so I'm on the Chamber of Commerce, as well as attend service over at St. Thomas. So I'm really excited to be joining the board here now, and I look forward to good things to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you also. Counsel, we can appoint these as, as a group, is that okay?
Yes, yes. Again, unless any board member decides.
Unless somebody wants to divide the question.
Divide the question, exactly.
All right, I'd ask for a motion to appoint Janie Bax, Matt Wigington, and Jack Weedeman to the zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? Madam clerk, let's call the roll on this.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, there's your new chairman right over there, so you probably have some more. Okay, next, come forward and tell us what's happening.
Hi, I'm Mark Bean with the Peoria Heights Suburban Lions Club. I'm also the vice president of the Peoria Heights Congregational Church and retired steam fitter. What we proposed last meeting was a pathway through the park with the Lions Club down at the Lions Park. And I, unfortunately, it was a day short for my submittal, so we extended it to this month. And I did submit drawings last time too, hopefully everybody got one. And we're just asking to go ahead with procedure, or proposal.
Mike, we're okay with this? You've looked it over?
Yes, it looks all good, you can pay for everything, so.
No expense to the village?
Not me. The club.
No expense to the village, but Public Works is okay with?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bean? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, thank you, good luck, Mark. Next is a request for approval, approval of Armed Forces Celebration Donation and the, and event in the amount of one thousand dollars. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Rob Matheson, I don't see you here tonight, is there anyone here tonight from, oh, Michaela, are you going to take this? Okay.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, so Robbie Matheson could not make it tonight. Scott Corsat was going to be here, but there was a, a passing that he's dealing with. Matthew Barnes is in Texas, so it's me. So yeah, so basically, every year, this is the, this will be the third year now, at Poor Bros, they have something called the Armed Forces Celebration. And it's, it's to celebrate our vets and our active military. The last three years, like I said, it's happened down at Poor Bros. Robbie, Scott, Matthew, and Michael Gilmore, who is the military advisor for Darren LaHood, put this thing together. This will benefit Honor Flight and also Habitat for Heroes. And there's a new build here on Prospect. So they approached me this year, they wanted to add a portion, a family-friendly portion here to Tower Park. This is not a chamber event, they just asked if I would chair that and spearhead that. So basically, most everything that we'll have up here, it will be from eleven to three, and then Poor Bros starts at four. We'll have a balloon artist, a face painter, a gaming trailer. I know there's a little train ride thing that'll come from the Lakin Legion. We're trying to get our local schools, their ROTC programs here. I'm trying to think what else. We're, we're just trying to do a family-friendly thing here that is in, in celebration of the vets and the military. So I wasn't sure that we were going to ask for funds for this, I wasn't aware of that, but there was a meeting set up a couple of weeks back, where Robbie, Scott, Matthew, myself, we were called in with Dustin, and I believe Mayor was there as, as well. And they are asking for some funds to help.
Well, we're honored to host this event, and we're honored to have so many veterans groups in the, in the community.
Yes.
Scott Corsat is a really great asset here. We do have this in the, in the budget, and you are recommending this, correct Dustin?
That's correct, Mayor.
Any questions?
Have we donated before to that? Do you remember?
I don't believe we have.
No, yeah.
Okay, we have a limit on our donations, so.
Correct.
It's in this year's budget, so.
There's a three thousand dollars in the marketing budget for donations, this would be the first request of this fiscal year.
Right. And, and I'm fully aware of donor fatigue, I, in fact, I, I don't like standing here asking. Most everyone that would be participating in the family-friendly portion that day are donating their services and their time. So I think live music, entertainment, or bounce houses have been kind of thrown around those ideas, those would cost something. I do have a meeting set up with Gary Pearl and Wayne Baum, I know they want to be involved to help sponsor to some length. But I think this would be advantageous, advantageous for the village as a whole to embrace this and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm for it, but I mean, the thousand dollars, we'll bring that down to two thousand, and we have, we typically have several charities that we donate, so.
Right, totally understand, yes.
I mean, do we want to do the thousand dollars, or do we want to do less?
I think it's a good cause, trustee Carter, that's why I recommended the thousand dollars.
So you recommend it?
Yes, it's, it's a good family event, I know they are, they are, they are seeking other sponsorship, and I know they've received some, so.
Yes.
I think that's, it's a fair amount.
I think that's all I have, I, I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but this, I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, and I'm sorry.
Trustee Weisenberg, what's, what's the money being used for?
It's to put on the event, but go ahead, if you drill down a little deeper on that.
Yeah, like they said, it's to offset costs as far as an itemized list, I don't know what that would be, but considering they have live bands, they have events for kids, it will go towards those expenses.
Yes, it's very minimal, very minimal.
It says on here that it's also being sponsored by the chamber, so did the chamber, you said it's not a chamber event, so what's happening?
No, it's not a chamber event, it is not. I, I think that may have been misconstrued or misunderstood, because I represent the chamber here.
Oh, so they put it on their flyer, just?
Yeah, I guess so.
So the chamber did not donate money to?
No, absolutely not, no. And I, I'm not getting paid for this, this is all volunteer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Madam clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
Next is a request of approval of Kone Repairs Selector Tape in the amount of nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents, trustee Mariscal is absent, so if I could have another trustee approve this, a motion approved?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, Dustin?
Uh, over the last few weeks, the board knows getting the tower up and running has been quite the task. The first bill we received, I believe, was just over twenty thousand dollars, the board approved. As they got in there, they found out that the selector tape needed to be replaced, the metal tape, which, which was an increase of nine thousand, five eighty-eight twelve. So really not an option for us, but obviously in the amount, need to come back to the board, so that has been fixed. We had a, we've had a great grand opening last week, so, but in front of you is an increase, another bill that passed on to us.
Questions?
No, was that required?
Yes, yes. The selector tape, yeah, the, the cart will not, will not go up without the selector tape, and it was a huge liability issue, obviously, with anybody in it, so.
So I attended a meeting where we had talked about, we, you spent quite a bit of money last year to do repairs of the car, and now we're doing repairs again, so are the repairs, are we stopping? Do we need to be doing more, like what's?
I, I would hope so, I would hope they would be stopping, but as trustee Gett stated last meeting, a maintenance agreement, which we already have, they are looking at another level, maybe we can have a higher level of maintenance agreement, so we don't have to have the, the high costs we do. But we do currently have a maintenance agreement, unfortunately, when the expenses occur on the tower, they're just a lot of money, so.
I would like for, to get ahold of Kone and have them kind of give us an update when they think about the life of that car, because the car was rebuilt.
I'll, I'll just make another comment about, you know, years ago, we did look at another company, and it was a lot more expensive and wasn't as efficient as Kone. So I think, I don't think there's a lot of businesses out there that do this, but we did look at other areas, a few, about five years ago, I believe, maybe six, and it, it just wasn't advantageous for the village, so we went back to Kone. So even though these seem expensive, it, it was worse.
I have, I have no problem with Kone, because I was there with, with the other one. It cost more, and the level of service was a lot less. I would just like to kind of, if they could kind of look at it, and we can, for down the road, what's going to, what can we expect with this, problems with this car, or we, I don't want to, I don't even want to think about having to replace it.
We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on the elevator in the last few years, and it, it needs to be done. But there's also, one of, one of the reasons we have put the Centennial Building and Tower Park and Village Hall in the Tiff District is, in the future, we hope to be able to use some of those funds, because this building itself has great needs, including the roof, you can see the tiles have leaked, especially upstairs, there's audiovisuals, issues here, there's lighting issues, but primarily the elevator is, is one of the big costs, including the roof of this building. So we hope that thankfully, things are going well in the Heights economically, that those, some of those funds can be used to improve the public property here, which is really our home right here. But we will, I, I would like you all to start thinking about, you know, a retreat where we talk about and identify our top priorities, and this elevator certainly deserves our attention.
So can we, Chief, you had mentioned about looking at different maintenance agreements, can we get, can we get a copy of the difference, maintenance agreement that we could, might go to, and then get us a cost of what it's cost us, like in the last, I don't know, five years, or, you know what I mean, of the maintenance, just to see if it pans out, maybe we need to upgrade it?
Of course, they're supposed to be bringing me all the options for the village to consider, and soon as I get them, I'll bring them to the board. And as far as a cost history, I'll bring that to the board as well, we can get that.
Yeah, they're a lot better than the one we had before, because the agreement we had with that was basically, well, if your elevator breaks down, we'll come fix it, but there's, there was no guarantee of maintenance and taking care of it, and Kone's been the one to go with, in my opinion, so.
The selector tape, is it a consumable part? Is there a life to it?
I'm not sure, trustee Weisenberg, I'm not sure, is it how long, how long this one has lasted, unless, Mike, did they tell you, when you were out there, how long, when was the last time that selector tape was replaced?
Um, he didn't really say, it might have been a couple of years ago, but I just think the main issue is the top and the other, and top and elements.
Right.
You don't have an enclosed hat.
Right. I can find out, though.
We can find out.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
What was that?
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, a request of approval for payment to Bobcat of Peoria in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars for a snow blade. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Um, I make a motion, but not, it's not for a snow blade.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, previously, this milling machine, we approved it to buy it, we're just going to approve it tonight to pay for it. We had a milling machine before, my predecessor got rid of it, so we got a new one. What it does, it mills the asphalt twenty-four inch wide, so we started repairing the streets, taking care of the infrastructure. So basically, it's a brand new, it's going to be, it's our summer work, a lot of summer work we do with that, so.
Questions for Mr. Casey or trustee Carter? All right, madam clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is a request of approval for Alwyn's Special Use Permit. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve this.
And do I have a second?
A second.
All right.
I can address this, Mayor, we, we approved the special use for Alwyn's solar project, the, if you recall, the ground-mounted, as opposed to the roof-mounted, under the new ordinance that we adopted, required special use approval. And the zoning board recommended approval, and this board at the last village board meeting back in, would have been April, approved that. Just in keeping with our practice, I prepared a special use permit, an actual document, so this is really just sort of crossing the T.
Brian Alwyn, I see you back there, would you like to come forward, tell us about your project, please?
Yeah, so we started the process approximately back in last October of looking at taking our store, Alwyn and Sons at seven oh three East War Memorial, completely off the electric grid and going solar. Several companies had moved into Peoria after the Illinois Energy Commission had set aside two hundred million dollars for the state of Illinois to, it was originally designed to help smaller businesses, but some larger businesses have benefited since that. Needless to say, we looked at it, and a lot of places were proposing somewhere around a hundred kilowatts, which did virtually nothing for our store. So with our existing building, our neighboring building, Bill Duran, is going to eat up approximately seventy-five percent of the solar panels on our roof. And then we were trying to figure out how we can maximize and get almost energy-free, which we were able to achieve with a eight tenths of an acre that we own behind, tucked away behind our store, by putting solar panels on the ground back there, in a somewhat enclosed area. That would take us up to five hundred and eighteen, or five hundred and twenty-three kilowatts, I believe it was, we needed five hundred and eighteen kilowatts to get our store completely off the electric grid and be a hundred percent solar. We've done that, we found, we, we have, we, out of five solar companies, we picked two to really focus on, and it came down to one. We chose the companies out of Wisconsin, but they have all local representation that lives here in the area, primarily Washington, Illinois. We've got the, we, we came here in front of the board, they made a special permit and put it on the books, because it's, I think, the first solar project in the Heights, actually some, some of the first of this size in the Peoria area itself. We were picked in the lottery from the state of Illinois, approved with it, and now we have started the process of marking things to hopefully start construction in the next month to two months of doing this project.
Questions?
So you have it on the Doran roof and on the ground, is that right?
We have it on the roof and the ground, I didn't hear what else she said there.
That you're going to have it on the roof and then on the ground also?
Correct.
Do you have any on the Alwyn building, or no?
We, we'll have it on our building, our neighboring building, which is the, the former Bill Duran building, and then, and the back, on the back, eight tenths of an acre that we, we own as well.
Okay, and what's on the ground, is it going, it's going to be fenced, right, for?
There's already primarily fencing around there. We have some chain link fence, we discussed that, we're not subject to fencing, but a lot of it is already fenced in. But part of the reason fencing is a little bit of a burden is because it will create shadows and not be able to charge the, the rays like, like they're supposed to.
Anyone else?
She, she asked the question, I was just going to ask you to comment on the fencing.
Oh, did that, did that answer it?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Let me take this time to thank you and your cousins, you have a fantastic, family-run business that we really love having here. You employ a lot of people, and we often talk a lot about Restaurant Row, but the Alwyn's Deli and Alwyn's Grill, where we see you most every afternoon, is a great addition to Peoria Heights, we love having here, thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, if we're ready for the question, madam clerk?
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is a request of approval for professional engineering services. We're gonna ask that this be deferred, so, um, I would ask for a motion to defer this.
Oh, I make a...
And a second?
Second?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, would you explain why we're deferring this?
Yeah, we had to cancel a meeting with our engineers, so before bringing it to the board, I think that we, we should have at least one more meeting to get the, get an overview of what they're recommending, so I think it'd be just premature to bring this to the board tonight, so that's why I asked for it to be tabled.
Okay, all right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee yet?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we defer that. The last action or item of business is a request for approval of the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau dues in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve this.
And a second? Okay, go ahead, trustee Kazam.
I'm gonna ask, uh, just a second.
Who was the second?
Thank you. To speak to this, if you would.
Thank you, trustee Kazam, these, this is an annual, annual due that we pay to the convention, the Visitors Bureau, uh, and it covers a lot of publications, the Peoria Heights is mentioned in, uh, we do meet with them monthly for updates, what they're doing for us, a breakdown of how much advertising we're getting for the, for the money. I know we did talk about not proceeding with this, but the last meeting I had, we are getting a lot of bang for our buck, so, uh, we reduced it a little bit, so that's why I'm, I recommend that we, uh, we pay the amount of...
Forty-five hundred.
Four thousand five hundred to the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay, madam clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee yet?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeVor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Any miscellaneous items anyone'd like to just bring up? Okay, we'd be at payment of the bills, I had, I asked for a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any question on any of the bills, or discussion on the motion? Madam clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee yet?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.